Okay, I apologize for being just a minute late here. Looking to see what commission members I've got. And I see Scott. I see Susan. I see Anne. Weanne, is that you on the phone? And I see Anne Creme. So, one, two. So it looks like we've got the full commission here. And it's 7:01, so I'll call the public hearing to order. This is for the application PZC 21-03, property known as Old Farms Road. Applicants seeking a special permit for two rear lots in accordance with section 4.9 of the Andover zoning regulations. And a two lot open space cluster re-subdivision in accordance with section 5.5 to the Andover zoning regulations. In the Andover subdivision regulations. As proposed, this re-subdivision consists of one lot with that old farms road. The an easement and one lot off Pine Ridge Drive at the end of the cul-de-sac. With that in mind, you all heard that we are recording, so everything we say is on the record. Although I do not expect to seat alternate Anne Blanchard because we do have a full commission. All commission members are entitled to ask questions during the public hearing. But when we go to the deliberation, the only those seated members that will be acting on the application will be able to discuss at that point. The last thing I'd like to say before we start on the application is due to a family emergency, our zoning agent Jim Halcy is not with us tonight. And so I think that will probably make a little bit of a difference as we go through the business. I, I, I think it's important that we, we hear from Jim. I did talk to him a couple of times today about various things, but I know that, that he was still reviewing some materials, especially with respect to the old farms road. So we, my thought is that we most likely will not deliberate on that tonight. But I do want to get through the public hearing on that. With that in mind, I'll let George or Eric or whoever they want to have talk to the application. Do so, walk us through that in, for George and Eric. Please be sensitive to the fact that while you have given this presentation several times through the inland wetlands agency. This is, this is the public hearing for planning and zoning. And so your, your discussions are what provide the, the public record for us to make our decision on going forward. After, after that's done, I would normally have Jim Holacy give us his perspective on the application. He's not here tonight, so we'll afford the commission members an opportunity to ask questions. And following that, any members of the public that might be here in support of that application can provide their input to us as well. Any questions before we begin? Hearing none. George or Eric, who is going to lead off for us tonight?
I think I can do that. Is it, is it okay if I share my screen and display the plans?
It, it is, let me just. Yep, our board clerk is here. She's going to be controlling that. Thank you, Mindy. So yeah, Mindy, if you allow Eric to share his screen, I appreciate it.
Okay, just can everybody see the the document I'm sharing?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm Eric Leteska. George Korea is on here soon, and I think maybe George, you know, please chime in here and there. If I'm, if you feel like I'm leaving anything out that's material for the public to hear. I mean, hello to the commission members and hello to the members of the community that have jumped on the call. So Jed is right, we have, we have kind of gone through this a number of times and for, in front of the wetlands, inlands, wetlands and water courses commission. And also a public hearing there. I would say we're pretty practiced at pointing things out that the wetlands commission are mostly concerned with and less practice with the planning and zoning commission. So, you know, happy to answer questions once we get to the other side of just kind of marching through the plans. What I've got up here is what's posted on the town website. The, there, there are a couple of drafts that may be posted, but this is the 614. It's our, it's our latest and greatest. And it's, it's a total of about six pages. The last, the last few are really devoted to the, to the crossing over some wetlands, which we can look at a little bit, but, but I think I'll be probably focusing on the first few pages. The, the very first page here, I think, will help to orientate, orient you as to where the property is located. If you're familiar with the area, this is Route 6 over here, Hendy Road. And then Pine Ridge, first right off of Hendy, well, second right off of Hendy after Route 6. And then Old Farms property is located. It's a currently a rear lot addressed up at Old Farms Road. Access to this, to this lot, which is about 14 acres in total, is through Old Farms Road. But the frontage of the property is actually on the Pine Ridge cul-de-sac. You'll see a little later here. So this is, this is a re-subdivision application. We're taking, we're looking to take the 14 acres, divide it into two lots. One, a little more than eight, one, a little less than six. And access to the second lot would be, would now be introduced from Pine Ridge Road. And that is where the wetlands, significant wetlands activity came from and why we started with wetlands before we got here. So I'm going to zoom out here. This page is the, the boundary plan, just without a lot of the detail of the topography. And the building areas, just these are where the lot and the, the lines, the proposed lines have been drawn so far. The, the property boundary goes around here at the existing property boundary with the little part that goes out to Pine Ridge. The proposed subdivision line goes right through the middle of the little part that sticks out to Pine Ridge. And then goes through here up until the, one of the corners of the, of the, of the lot, the way that it's shaped. This is, we're applying for open space rear lot subdivision lots. So with that comes requirements for land conservation. The boundaries for area that will be conserved are located here. There will be easements filed with both these, ensuring the that this, this land will just not be developed or impacted with some of our activity during, during construction and after it's permanent. The area on the other lot is, is a little larger. I think that's because it's composed of a lot more wetlands and there's some specific there's specific regulations when there's a lot of wetlands in the area. I, there, there are setbacks kind of noted on this as well. And then you can see wetlands delineated with the crossing through, the crossing over here where a driveway will, will end up. Zoom in and see if there's anything else here. I want to point out on this drawing. No, I think that's it here. George, is there anything else you want to point out here before we move to the next one?
Nope, you explained it pretty good.
So the next drawing here, which is pretty dense, and I think it's mostly because there's, there's a pretty there's a pretty steep grade on one side of the property, the part coming from old farms on the, on the east side. But here you can see just give me a moment while that loads. A, on the drawing is a driveway which actually is already existing. The owners of the property prior to us actually went so far as to install a driveway, but that's pretty much the extent of their, their construction on the site. For the most part, we have basically adopted their, their plan for development on this side of the property. So our drive, the driveway on this side modeled exactly like theirs, the, the, the site where the home would be built is, is in the same exact place of a previously approved application. The, you know, there's, there's been soil testing, percolation rates assessed. And a couple of sites noted for septic systems on, on both sides of the property. Those are here and here, here and here. And then you can see a square, a buildable square where the prop, the, the one family, single family dwelling on both sides would be constructed. On this side, you can see, you know, there's in, there's a utility easement. Utilities, though we haven't exactly figured this out with ever source yet. They kind of need us to get through the subdivision process before they'll come in and design their system. We know that there's going to be needed utility easement to bring utilities into this lot. It'll run through the driveway, which because we, the driveway or the, the area right here, because we're on both, we, one lot is half of it and the other lot is the other, the, there's a, there's an easement needed for the utilities to come through here. There's a well location shown on both of them, 75 foot radiuses. And I think, you know, there's a lot of detail on this, on this page and as well as the next one about grading and then erosion and sedimentation, sedimentation control.
Eric, can I get you to point out the, I see you added the extent of clearing to this version? And can you point that out? Because it doesn't jump right out at you when you're looking.
Yes. Thanks, Jed. The, this border right here, and then it intersects or ends at the silt fencing or hay bales around here on this side. Goes up to here and then the perimeter, you know, kind of follows up the, the contour of the driveway on this side. I don't know if we've got an area on there, but you know, just our intent really is not to clear a great deal of land. We, we purchased rural land, you know, in the woods because we, you know, we, we think it's natural, you know, to it's naturally beautiful. We don't really want to, you know, clear a bunch of land. And I think the, the extent of the clearing reflects that. And that's true on both sides. So here's the other the other area. It does, it does go out to here for the easement. But stops here and then obviously most of this area where the driveway would come through is, is, is pretty much clear at this point. It was mostly clear before we got there and then a few trees have actually fallen or needed to be removed because of their, their state since we, since we purchased the land in July last year. I think that's the, that's it for this, at least what I wanted to mention. George, anything else on this one?
No, I'm okay.
So this is the, a close up of the area where the driveway would cross over two wetland streams that kind of merge just immediately south of the, of the crossing. The design here involves, well, so there's actually, let me go to this page first, just to give you the cross sectional view. So if you're looking up at the crossing, say from here up in this direction. And if you were standing sort of in the middle of it, you'd find yourself pretty low and a low lying corridor, corridor where the, where the water flows through. So the design involves a little bit of grading to flatten out the, the, the grade here, just because we're trying not to have it be so steep that the driveway requires paving. So it gets graded through here at the, at the, the ridge, if you will, or the, the edge of the hill. And then we actually will construct using interlocking concrete blocks. Basically an area that we would fill inside the middle of. So two, two rows of it, I think it's about 12 feet wide to cross the area and then it would meet up with the bank of the channel on the other side, which will also get some grading to make sure that it's, it's just not too steep. There's, there's grading that, that would occur on both sides to just sort of make the slope a little natural rather than, than having these cuts. Those areas would get seeded and while construction's going on stabilized, so there's not a necessary erosion. And then the, as far as the passage of water through the, through the crossing, there will be two culverts, two styles of culverts installed on the western side closer to Pine Ridge. That is going to be a three foot by eight foot concrete box culvert that will be embedded into the ground 25%. I think it will be buried about nine inches. On the other side would be a round culvert pipe, probably what most people are accustomed to seeing. It would be three foot in diameter. Both, on both sides, we would have what's called riprap installed to manage the, the rate of the flow of water, redisperse it into what a more natural pattern of flow with the way that it, the way that the water flows today. And this system has been engineered to, to pass the 100 year storm. Meaning there's a 1% or less, 1% or less chance of the event happening in any given year. It's designed to pass it with very, very little effects to the surface elevation of the water as compared to the crossing not being there at all. In fact, if you go not a very long way up 50 to 100 feet, this, a really rare rainstorm event would, you would only see water levels increase about nine inches, I believe, is what the engineers report said. Which by the way is a, is something that's posted on the website. If you wanted to read both some of the engineering calculations and the report from the engineer. And if you look at the elevations behind the houses on Pine Ridge, you know, nine inches is just well below any, any elevation that would affect any, any of the houses north of here where the crossing is. We also, this also happens to be an area that the national, it's listed with the national diversity database as, as potentially having some endangered. I don't know exactly what the word is, but listed species, I think, is the, the term that they use doesn't necessarily mean it's a rare species of anything that's, that's totally endangered. But the box turtle, which has a habitat on the banks on the Hop River may from time to time pass up, sort of wander up in this area. Which by the way, is, is pretty much been determined to be an intermittent stream as opposed to just wetlands. If you ever find yourself in this, in this area around the time, not long after a, a storm or really in the, the height of the wet season, you could find standing flowing water. But in the, in the dry seasons, we've, you know, we've definitely seen this be totally bone dry. It's even hard to tell that it's wetlands unless you're trained to look for, for wetlands. So the, the turtle is, is something that, you know, some of the design kind of accommodates in particular that that box culvert meets a requirement both by the, the state regulatory authority as well as the army, the US Army Corps of Engineers for what they call an openness ratio, which more or less makes it, you know, makes the crossing look like less of an obstruction and something that an, an animal like a turtle would just want to cross through. As opposed to, you know, a smaller opening might actually discourage them and, and cut off access to some of their natural habitat. So there's been a, you know, lots and lots of engineering, a great deal of work with the wetlands commission. On May 27th, we got approval for, for this design. And, and, you know, have sort of proceeded now with planning and zoning as a result of that approval and the permit, I believe, is posted on the town's website. I think that's all I have, George. Is there something else you'd like to, to point out?
Nope, I'm okay.
So I, maybe I guess to the members of the commission, if I left anything you feel like is important to mention to the, or show to the members of the public. I can do that now.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Do any of the other commission members have any questions of the applicants? And I guess here, if you can stop screen sharing for the time being, that way I can see the other commission members that I might be able to figure out if anybody's trying to ask a question here or not. Susan, did you have any questions?
Uh, no. No, I, I found that the presentation was very helpful and it tied, I attended the site walk a couple of weeks ago and it really tied everything together. So I really don't have any questions.
Okay, Scott? Scott Preson, any questions?
Right, I, I, on that area that we were just talking about, the applicant was just talking about, there's, there's 270 feet of disturbance and I don't see any downstream erosion control at all on this map. The biggest amount of disturbance on the whole site right here, and I, I see upstream and downstream on the actual driveway, but I don't see downstream from the actual work that's going to be done. You're going to be cutting to, you know, to 100 feet on both sides of the up and review area and working in the wetlands and there's no erosion control listed on this portion of the map.
If you were to review the, the drawings, they are, there's silt fence that's downstream and there's hay bales. And also that, that are on the banks.
I see them in the driveway right away, the actual driveway right away, but I don't see any.
The, on the downstream side, the the silt fence would be along the property line.
That listed on this map?
I don't have the drawings in front of me, but I did see it on one of the drawings. It's, it's on one of.
Can I share again? Yeah.
Go ahead, Eric.
Yep, right there. And if you look at those like horseshoeed little, yeah, that's all silt fence.
Right, that's not, that's not on my map.
614, is that the version you're looking at? Actually, this is a this particular one's been the same since March 10th.
That's not on my map.
What, what is the date on your revision?
310, the last one was 310, 21.
Yeah, this drawing is 310, right, Eric?
Andrew has this, Mr. Bushnell has this dated as 310. I mean, the, most of the modifications in the 614 version, if not all of them, were on the the ENS and grading plan. So I don't think he touched this. I think this has been like this since March 10th.
Going.
Scott, I'm looking if my drawing stated 310 and I, I do see those hay bales on there. I, I see what he's pointing out, both on the 310 version and the June version.
I see what, I see what it is there, Jed, but it's not on this one, I swear.
Are you on the same page?
Yep.
I.
One page doesn't show it, the other page does.
It's true.
What can it cheat four of six?
I see it on this next page, it is here.
Okay.
Another question I had was this is an A2 survey, correct?
Yes.
That's on. Yeah.
It'll be listed on the notes.
Yeah, it's in the notes of.
Right, that's on survey notes, number one. You see that it's listed conforming to A2, but I, I don't see a single boundary pin on this map. Or a reason for that?
I do not have an answer for that.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It would be something we need to enter Bushnell to answer. He's I believe he's away tonight.
There's no pins on the whole property located here.
Okay.
And another question I have was the, the wetlands, it says on the map references, number one, right here, that they were done in 1988 for the wetlands. That's 33 years ago.
Right, these, the area where the crossing was done was re-surveyed or redone by John Iannelli.
And he's, he's not a is he still around? When did he do those?
George, when was that? I mean, it was.
It would have been last fall. We walked around. And he. And he he redelineated the wetlands in the crossing area. Those are all the the orange and blue flags that we saw that were tied together. Off the area.
And.
I think it was in June that John and he did the.
Your map is dated the November 12th, 2020. By that man.
All right, yeah. But the other the other maps, this was delineated in eighty eight. Must have been just the rest of the property.
Yeah, it is the rest of the property and I I believe that's the original, like woodland subdivision.
Yeah. Okay, do you know anything about that?
I don't know. Well, everything that's been said so far has been true with respect to the wetlands. You know, they were the applicants used a map that was done in 1988 for the general portion. They've had, you know, recent wetlands delineation and and the wetlands are flagged, you know, down there on the driveway crossing, which was not part of the initial survey.
Yeah.
And you know, based on on the, you know, approval of the Wetlands Commission, I was satisfied with the wetlands work that was done in preparing the application. Yeah, I don't expect that the wetlands would have changed an awful lot over the last thirty years.
Yeah, probably not.
And so I was okay with that.
Yep, just wondering if you know if there was any time timetable on, you know, delineation of the wetlands.
I'm not aware of that. And I would ask you, Scott, and it would make sense to me on these boundary pins that there's probably some of those that should be noted on the drawings now. I do know there's a bunch of additional monuments that have to be posted. And as far as I could tell from our regulations and the notes and the drawings, it just says that you know, the monuments have to be in place prior to signing off on on the house there.
Right, and I know we require pins.
Yep, I I think it makes sense that there probably needs to be a couple, but I couldn't swear, I couldn't cite you chapter and verse on where that is right this minute. So I've got that up as a look up for me. If Jim were here, he'd probably be able to provide the answer, but but he's not. So we can come back to you, Scott. Did you have any other questions for the applicants to address now? If not, I was going to go on to Anne Creme.
Um, I don't really have any questions. It just, it looks very good to me, the plans and everything.
Okay. Leanne, any questions?
No.
Okay. Anne Blanchard.
I don't have any questions either. I think they did a great job explaining everything in the site walk last week or a few weeks ago helped.
Okay, and of course, I I did come with a couple of questions and and the first one is, you know, on on the driveway itself, do Eric or George, do you know what the design weight limit for that driveway is? Because I know we're we're expecting to bring the emergency vehicles down into the property.
I don't know the actual weight rating, but the design is for it's eight inches of compacted gravel. But we can find that out. I don't know exactly what the weight rating is.
Okay, yeah, I would like to have that because there is a specification in our regulations that that talks to that, and I'd just like to make sure we've got that in there. The other, the other thing that as I was doing my research on driveways that that I'm interested in, and I did not get to it before tonight, is it asks us to have the town engineer look at the construction and materials used in the driveway, and I don't think that would take him a long period of time, but I if I were to go look at paragraph four point sixteen Bravo. Does the sub base and or base materials per review and approval by the town engineer, and I know that that we don't have that at this point. And so one of the thoughts I had was, you know, I could have either made that a condition of approval or or whatever in and so that's that's an outstanding thing that we need to do to get through that. And then I had oh. So I know it talks about driveways and that for the various lots. And I was curious if you had come through. You know, what are the addresses of the two lots going to be? Are they both going to be on Pine Ridge Drive or the one is on you know, Oak Farms and in one on Pine Ridge, you know, where the mailboxes are going to be and that sort of thing?
Yeah, what what I thought we would keep the twenty Old Farms Road for Lot One. And we would address a new address for the Lot Two off of Pine Ridge.
Okay, and that makes sense. I just, you know, I don't know where that gets documented, but we're just trying to get, know my expectations before we approve the plan and head on there. The if I looked at the sequence of construction on the property, it talked about first clearing the trees and then putting in the driveway. And and my question is, only because I got smarter, because I got surprised on a different lot, was how are you going to get the trees out on the other side of the wetlands before you put the driveway in?
We're going to stockpile.
Okay, so would you do, would you be doing anything to get, you know, the equipment that you need to do to cut the trees down or? It's what I saw on another property that I wasn't fond of, and it had a a culvert going, you know, across the driveway, just like you. And they had the sequence of construction just like yours. And what they actually did is they went in, they filled in the wetlands to drive the equipment across it. And then after they were all done, they pulled all that material out of the wetlands and put the culvert in. And I didn't think that was what we were expecting to have happen. And so
We will not be doing that. We, the plan is to, we we can do some stockpiling. As far as getting a piece of equipment in, we can bring a machine in from Old Farms roadside and drive it down through the woods if need be, but the the idea is to is to start from the Pine Ridge side and work our way in.
Okay. But if you're starting on the Pine Ridge side and working your way in, that takes you across the wetlands, then.
Yeah, we will.
This isn't a wetlands meeting, but the wetlands are a little wetter right than.
Yeah, no, we don't. We will not be crossing the wetlands with equipment until until it's in until the the until the process is completed in or in progress.
Yep. Now, on the general notes on sheet six, general note five says that the proposed driveway would not exceed a fifteen percent slope. And I think that should say a ten percent slope, and that would be consistent with what your drawings have.
It's my understanding that fifteen percent is the maximum. From ten to fifteen percent, the driveway needs to be paved. Anything less than ten percent can be gravel.
Yeah, I would expect your note to say less than ten percent because you're expecting to leave that a gravel driveway.
Yeah. That is certainly our intent. I mean, I think we can talk to Andrew and maybe that's just a.
He may have just saw the maximum, but we will have that changed. Yeah.
Okay, yep, I got it. And as you look through the general notes and you talk to Andrew, I think there's a couple of numbering errors as you go down your list there. And then you repeatedly refer to the town of Coventry in the notes. So we just ask you to take a look at that.
Of course.
And again, those aren't earth shattering things, but so my biggest concern at this point really, you know, concerns the driveway and and the management for that. I had a couple of comments on your your conservation easement. And certainly you've made me smarter. This is the first time I I've seen a conservation easement, so I'm now a lot smarter than I was before. It did not talk anything that I could find about the your your planned removal of the invasive plants. You know, you're going to get rid of the Burberry and you're going to plant some other stuff in there. And I don't know if that area where you were going to remove the Burberry was in the conservation easement, but you had an awful lot of the wetlands in the conservation easement, so I thought maybe it might be.
It might be.
And so if I could just ask you to to take a look at that.
I mean, if that were the case, I mean, is the expectation still that we would not do anything in the conserved area, even though this is removing invasive species of plants and replanting something native? I mean, is that?
No, I would, actually, I would prefer that you do do that. Now, I might be off on that, but that was my thought is is I would like to grant in the easement the authority for you to go in and do what you were talking about doing and not have that come up to an issue. And I know, again, you know, on like item number ten there talks about before commencement of site work, easement boundaries are to be marked with oak stakes and red flags. And it will remain in place until the boundary markers are installed. So again, that's more more monumentation. Jim's not here tonight. My question was really going to be who's responsible for putting those monuments into place to outline the the conservation area? And and I'll touch base with him to see if that's if that's you or if that's the town that has to go in and do that. Also, looking at your your notes, and again, this is to to head off a problem. You we've got the area to be cleared. Put on your drawing now, and I like what I saw. I see that's consistent with your desire to keep the amount of trees cut down to a minimum. It also requires you, before anybody starts clearing, that you go in and you you survey and post the extent of clearing so that the guys come in and clear, don't take any more than that. And again, we've had in recent past where we had a very good drawing of what we were expecting to get cleared. And then you go back and it seemed like the people who were actually clearing the trees didn't have any idea of what what the limitations on that were. And I'd like to see you maintain the area, you know, like you had discussed that you wanted that to be. And that's all I have now. The is is several other people commented, your your plan was certainly robust, had a lot of good information. Eric, you did a great job walking us through that. I think we're getting close to the end. I feel a little uncomfortable deliberating on the application tonight without the zoning agent here to to participate in that. And and so my question is, with with all that you've gone through, if we were to put off the deliberation until the next meeting, which I I don't have the the date in front of me, but it, you know, the the third Monday in July, whatever that is, is that an undue hardship to you folks at this point?
Say, no, it's not. We're we're okay.
Okay, then then with that in mind, you know, I will probably put off that deliberation, but that's all the questions that I had. I did see there was, I think, one of your neighbors that was on on earlier. I didn't know if anybody from the public had any comments that they wanted to make at this point.
Hi, this is Florence and Bob Dooey. We live on Twenty Old Farms Road. Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, Eric and George. Good to see you guys. Thank you for your explanation so far and to the committee members. Um, we just had a couple of questions about the construction process with the driveways being built as far as bringing in the materials for each lot. Will will the driveway be built for Pine Ridge before? And will you be bringing in materials for that for the second house that way? As opposed to, you know, bringing everything in our our side during construction? It's one of our questions and
Concrete.
Yeah, Bob was concerned about like the concrete and all that heavy materials coming in through our our driveway since it's already been, you know, cracked a little bit.
Yeah, we had a little damage, you know that.
Yeah, I mean, it's no big deal at this point, but just as far as all those vehicles coming, you know, in and out, we were wondering about that. And also just wanted to make sure that, you know, if the the your permit does go through for the subdividing, that the driveways won't be connected at all, right? So that we won't be, you know, we'll be assured that we're only going to have traffic for one house coming our way. Those are our questions.
Okay, Eric or George, would you like to respond to those?
Yes, so as far as we understand that your driveway is probably not rated to have a concrete truck rolling over it. We do plan, and Eric and I have been talking, we have been talking about we're going to do the crossing and we're going to bring as much of the heavy stuff in from the other side to keep the trucks off of your driveway. That's our plan.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And, uh, as far as, uh, interconnecting the driveways, uh, there might be a, a walking path or, you know, but that's really it.
Okay.
Well, like the driveway's already been scarred at the top and you guys explained, Eric explained, we'll fix that later because the material's coming in. But what if it just start to get destroyed? I mean, you know, like the wetlands guy told me, he said, it's not your problem, Bob. If they destroy it, they gotta fix it. And I know, you know, now that we're on screen, I, I'd like everyone to know that because if, if I come down the driveway one day and my driveway isn't just gone, I, I won't flip out. I'll know you're going to fix it. You know, CLMP even said if someone destroyed your driveway, they fix it, not you. But it's, you know, this driveway is kind of long and I love it because it's nice and flat. But, you know, winter's coming. I, I don't know when you guys are building, but I'm just concerned with that because it's, I know, it's, it's really nice that I can plow it. If it starts to get ripped up, I won't be able to plow it. I won't be able to snow blow it. I'll be stuck in the woods. So, you know, I know it's going to start happening, but okay, so I just, it's been recorded. I just hope you guys would just understand that, you know, it's, it's been like that for 20 years. And now it might just start to crumble. You know, I know the oil trucks come down here. Uh, I have trucks come down here. They don't destroy it. But I know if you bring in cement blocks, um, like the, I know the, the biggest one is going to be the, the septic. That is a huge truck and it's a huge crane and it's a lot of weight. So I don't know if they can come in the other way. You know, like you said, the bridge has to handle that weight.
Damn, we do plan to come in from your side.
Okay. All right, I, I'm not, you know, not, not giving you our time. I just want you to understand our concerns. I mean, we're, we're going to work with you guys all the way. We love it that you're coming in. Got no complaints. You guys are great. Okay. All right. Thanks, George.
Thanks, guys.
No worries.
And thank you for your, your comments and your questions.
Thank you.
I, I certainly would not have come up with those questions, uh, without your input. Appreciate that.
No problem.
Any other questions or comments of the applicant?
Uh, how much of the trees on the driveway are going to be removed? Is it, is it? Do you have, guys have any idea?
The driveway needs to be 16 feet wide and that's the extent of our clearing. So basically eight, eight feet from the center line left and right. Unless the fire marshal has something else to say.
Right. Says clear trees as required.
Yeah, that's good.
I know, uh, this afternoon, Jim heard back from the fire marshal who, uh, who said, uh, he was satisfied. Um, again, not being able to talk to Jim, my, my question was, I, I would have expected that the fire marshal would have wanted a circular turnaround so that he could just drive the truck around. The requirement is he doesn't have to back out. So I was going to just push back on him a little bit to make sure that, uh, that they were satisfied with that. I know you guys have worked very hard to try and pursue that matter of getting an answer from the fire marshal. And so I'll, I'll share with you what we got verbally from him today. I do need to have a, a letter in the file saying that in, uh, actually, uh, that's, uh, I guess that, uh, that another question is just coming to me, uh, right now is that, uh, I don't know if the Doobies driveway needs to be rated to the same rating. It would seem that it is because it's got to get the emergency trucks down to, uh, to the other house that you're building. So anyhow, I need to follow up with the fire marshal. He was a little late getting back to us. I, I suspect that we'll be able to get through all of his concerns, but, uh, but the driveway from a, a planning and zoning point of view of making sure that, uh, we had everything done right seemed to be one of the more difficult issues, uh, that I wanted to make sure we were taken care of.
On, on a driveway longer than 400 feet, yet I think that you have to have a fire truck pull off. The one that's coming off of Pine Ridge isn't over 400, but the other one it could be.
Well, it just says that, uh, on a rear lot, the fire marshal needs to, uh, to approve. And I, and I know you're right, uh, on a couple of the lengths for a pull off, but it does say he needs to be able to turn around his, uh, emergency equipment, so he doesn't need to back it out.
Scott, on, on the long driveway, there are two turnouts.
Yeah, I saw that.
There's two there. And if you look at the drawings, the way that the driveways are shaped down by the houses, uh, they're shaped that way so that the truck can do a, a K-turn there and, and turn around and not back out.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So, uh, so for the last time, I'll ask any further comments before we, uh, we wrap up the comment section in the question section.
Hi there. Uh, this is Ken Van Kara and I live up on, uh, Chester Brooks Road. And I just had a couple of questions that I'd like to ask. I apologize I wasn't able to be at the, you know, the last meeting, uh, where we talked about this. And so I just want to make sure that we cover a couple of things.
Um, And what did you say your address was? I, I missed the road. What road were you on?
Chester Brooks.
Thank you.
Which is right up above Pine Ridge.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so I wanted to start by saying I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, making lands available in a responsible manner. I think that's good for Andover. I think that's good for us all. Uh, but I want to make sure that, you know, that makes sense here. It's incumbent upon us to make sure, uh, that environmentally, uh, this makes sense and it seems a little bit complex. So I've got a couple of questions. You know, first of all, are we comfortable about the wetlands and what gets constructed? And whether, whether there's any risk of flooding, et cetera, to existing properties?
I guess I will respond to that question and say that, uh, planning and zoning perspective, I am comfortable because it was approved by the inland wetlands commission. Uh, I and Jim Halcy are also members of the inland wetlands commission, so we had a chance to, uh, weigh in on that. And as we were working through the application, one of the neighbors expressed a concern that during certain times of the year, the water gets fairly deep backed up into his yard. And we had a specific engineering study done by the town's engineer who concluded that this driveway should have no detrimental effects on what we have seen. Now that also, that also means that we would have to, uh, make sure that, uh, you know, the, the culverts don't get blocked up with other materials and that sort of thing, but, uh, that is going to be in, in the, uh, approval is that the owners have to maintain those culverts clear so that we don't get that sort of backup.
So I, I read the studies and I saw that. And what is the guarantee to folks who currently have property there?
The only guarantee is that, uh, that we've had an engineering assessment done who, uh, you know, that concluded that, well, we've had more than one engineering assessment done. The applicant's engineers went out and studied it and showed that that, uh, would not be a problem. And I was uncomfortable with that. And so I asked that we have our own engineer go out and evaluate the data. He, he requested some data from the applicants and, uh, and concluded the same thing. I would also say that after the most recent, you know, we had a couple of not 25-year rain events, but we had a couple of pretty heavy rains recently, uh, that I went out to take a look at the amount of water running through the wetlands. And I was surprised how small the amount was after what was a fairly heavy rain. So I take my own going out to monitor the best I could as opposed to our wetland sidewalk, which was done last August when it was pretty dry out there. I wanted to go out and do a little other investigating than I did. And my conclusion was that that should not be an issue. Of course, there are no, you, nothing in, in life is absolute and, uh, and so I can't say that there's not, uh, a case that we could, but I do think that we did our due diligence to the best of our ability. And, and we have exceeded what the requirements are. It was checked out by the Army Corps of Engineer and they agreed with it. And, and so, uh, I thought that we had done all that we could to assure that the neighboring property owners weren't hindered by the application that we were looking at.
So I appreciate that. So we, we had a review in the dry season and one in one year on the wet season and a 25-year uh, review that says, uh, by the Army Corps of Engineers that this is unlikely to be a problem. Is that, am I getting it fundamentally right?
Yes, but I think that the data was driven by what is the amount of rainfall you would expect to get in a hundred-year storm? Not what we saw during the heavy rains in the spring because, you know, the, in, in, uh, if I'm going back from memory, the requirement was that it had to be designed for a 25-year flood. The, uh, the applicants designed it for a hundred-year flood without any significant backup. So I'm not exactly sure what, what is causing the backup that is seen, but I'm not convinced it's due to putting in a driveway for this particular application. Yeah, I don't know if that's difference in topography, uh, you know, going off into different lots or, or whatever.
Well, you know, I know this has been discussed before, but it's fairly wet down there. And, uh, when the rain comes, it builds up. You know, I'm not in the, uh, Army Corps of Engineers, but I play one on TV. So I just had to ask about it because it seems challenging. You know, it's currently woods. It's the home to, you know, barred owls that we have right behind our home, uh, that are fairly rare. Uh, it's got fisher cats, uh, bears, coyotes. You know, I'm, I'm concerned about whether we know what we're doing to the environment.
And that would have been a question better asked of the inland wetlands commission.
Understood. And do they have a report that's available?
If you go to, uh, the town website, all the information from the public hearing that we did on that uh, is available. I think, uh, you've probably looked at, at most of it based on your discussion here tonight.
We, I, I would also add, there's some reports that were submitted by, uh, an individual named George Logan. He, he, um, uh, his, his outfit is called R E M A, Rema. He's an ecologist certified wetlands scientist. He did an assessment of specifically the area where the crossing is. I think the thing that, um, that the reason his focus was down there was really about, um, the, uh, the observation from the, one of the consultants hired by the town, uh, Mr. Hank Gruner, that, you know, there are listed species down there. Um, and according to his, uh, analysis, that really is just because of the box turtle. And certainly there's other wildlife on the property. Uh, you know, I think uh, our, our philosophy here with tree clearing is, is consistent with this. We're just trying to minimal, uh, be minimal in our impact to the environment. Oh, the habitat where wildlife lives and then be extra, being extra careful where, uh, with respect to listed species.
Listed species?
Yeah, that, that would be the box turtle that.
So I, I just have one more, uh, question, which is, when the buyers of the property bought the property, you know, were they aware of the challenges, Eric, that environmentally they might face? Given that it's, you know, between a bunch of houses and in, you know, land that is currently sort of undisturbed.
I, I mean, I, I would say not everything, uh, the crossing, um, the impact there, the, the wood turtle kind of was a bit unexpected for us. But by and large, you know, we were, we bought a, we bought some land that had already been approved, like the, the, the northern half of the, the, the lot, which I thi- I think it's lot one, what, after, after subdivision. It's the same exact design that was approved by, um, the, the planning and zoning commission, I think in 2004. Um, so, you know, we, we kept that. And then I think the, you know, subdividing and then developing on the other side of the property. I, I wouldn't say we knew everything that was coming, um, but but we, you know, we had an idea that this was, um, it, you know, we, we actually kind of met with the planning and zoning commission on a pre-application basis, as well as the wetlands commission to get an idea of the outlook of, of whether or not something like this would work. And, you know, that was just, yeah, we're just trying to be, to do some due diligence beforehand, before we invested in the property and started working on constructing. So.
Right. And you can't sort of get the, uh, the town rendering on that until you've started the process.
Right. Right.
Okay, I, uh, I've got my questions answered. I think it's, it's a little challenging. It's going to be challenging to work in it. You know, my, you know, question to the town is how do we make sure that what we do here doesn't negatively impact other folks that, you know, have property along that basin? What's, what's, what's the responsibility of the town back to those individuals?
I don't know the answer to that, other than to say that I understood the question before we approved it through the wetlands. And that's why I wanted to get, make sure that we had the engineering assessment of the impact on that. And there can be a lot of different things that result in the water backing up upstream of that property, if you will. And, and I don't know what all those are, but I'm pretty sure that putting the driveway in isn't going to exacerbate it any based on the studying that we, we've done, because I knew that that would be the issue. You know, if I were a neighbor and I saw water coming up before you put something in to restrict the water, I would, I would have concerns. And I wanted to, to do what I could do to, uh, make sure that we weren't endangering any of those neighbors. Now, if time comes out and we see that it comes out differently than that, one of the things I like to do is go back, uh, you know, with all the applications and see, did we get what we thought we were going to get? And, and, uh, I'm sure that the neighbors will come point out to us if, if, uh, there's a change in, in what we're seeing.
Have, have you had an instance where that's come to fruition where you assessed it and later on, uh, neighbors were unhappy about it?
Not where neighbors were unhappy, but I have had conditions where I was not happy. And that's why I don't know when you signed into the, uh, the, the meeting tonight, but when we were talking about things like, how do you get the trees removed and through the wetlands before you put the driveway in? That was because of follow-up on a previous lot that I didn't like what I was seeing happen. And I wanted to make sure we took action to preclude that from happening again.
Well, my, you know, I'm, I'm sure that everybody's intention is positive here. I really do. And it's a beautiful place to live. It's why we love it. Uh, and, you know, we want to take care of it. It's very hard for me to assess. I just wanted to ask some questions about, you know, whether this works environmentally. And I'm not, I can't say I'm entirely comfortable. I, I don't think the intents are wrong here. But it's a, you know, it's a nice little piece of woods. And it's a beautiful spot. And I just worry that, you know, sometimes we make the, and, and I said I'm in favor of development for the town. But I sometimes worry that we do things that get ahead of ourselves relative to the environment. And it's hard to tell with this one because it's complicated.
It is. Uh, and I think there's, there's members sitting on this commission that had those same concerns. I'm one of them. There's members of the inland wetlands commission that had those same concerns. But the state statutes that we work to don't allow us to not approve an application because of there are some concerns. We have to be able to connect the dots to show a detriment. And that can be the grounds for not approving it. And, and we were not able to do that in, uh, until we approved it.
I, I understand and I agree. And the surveys that were done were, are available online.
I, uh, I don't know that every survey that was done. I think, you know, most of them are in the package. There's, there's certainly a wealth of information that's posted online with the, with the engineers' reports and the, uh, you know, a couple other people that the applicants had, as well as our own, uh, our own people. And, and we came to the conclusion that, uh, it may not be perfect. There's still some concerns, but we couldn't, we couldn't connect the dots and say, this isn't going to work because of this. Uh, the applicant in an earlier session said that the driveway ended up costing three times what they had budgeted for, uh, because of the changes that they did have to make to accommodate all the environmental concerns. I think they've done a good job of doing that.
Great. So I will try to look up those studies and I appreciate you taking the time to answer my questions. And Eric, I'm sorry, I know it's a challenging thing to, uh, to get this done. I just, uh, want to make sure that we're doing it the right way from a town perspective.
Yeah, no issues, Mr. Van Kier. I think the questions are, are okay. And, um, you know, all of the studies that we, we had done by our consulting folks, they're included on the, uh, in this application materials, um, on the planning and zoning page. And then I think a lot of the things that the town had consulting done for, you'd need to go to the wetlands commission page to find.
I wrote that down and I will check it out. And I appreciate your time and the time of the group as well, because I know you spend a lot of time listening to me talk, so.
Well, Mr. Van Kier, what was your first name, just so I can get it for our minutes?
It's Ken.
Ken, okay. And, uh, and I appreciate your questions. They, uh, they always make us better. So thank you.
I hope so, but maybe not.
Okay, one more, one more shot. It, uh, if anybody else has, uh, any other comments before we end the discussion with public hearing tonight. Hearing none. Mindy, I can't remember exactly what the words are that if we will continue the public hearing at the next meeting. Only because if our zoning agent has any information that he wants to get on the record, I want to be able to give him the opportunity to include that in the public record before we, we start deliberation. So at eight thirteen, we will conclude the public hearing for tonight. We will continue it at the next meeting, uh, that we have in July. And so at eight fourteen, I will open the regular meeting. I gotta find my. We're called to order roll call of seating of alternates. We had already gone through, uh, the roll call. We've got Scott Person, Leanne Hutchinson, Susan England, Anne Creme and myself. So, uh, so our alternates will not be seated tonight. Additions or changes to the agenda? I'm looking, uh, at the agenda, trying to, I, I, I think it's in there somewhere. Eric Anderson, did we have you on the agenda? I know you're here to speak to a couple of things that we were planning on having. But I don't, oh, it's, uh, I would like to move old business item F up to, uh, to the head, so we can let Eric speak for a couple of minutes and then, uh, finish up with that, if you're still with us, Eric. And is Eric Anderson still present? Okay, given that, that he's not, I won't make any changes to the agenda. Anybody else have any changes?
It looks like he's on, but his video is just off and he's muted. So I don't know if he's like actually here.
Okay, well, I was trying to accommodate him, get him out early and, uh, there you go. Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll move on to public comment. Um, anybody in the public, uh, have a comment for our regular meeting this evening on on any other topic than, uh, we had the public hearing on? Hearing none, I'll move on to old business. Uh, old business five A is the application of George Korea and Eric Letesca. And as we, uh, mentioned earlier, uh, because the zoning agent is not here, I will defer that item to the July meeting. Next item is, uh, the extension of existing special permit to operate a sand gravel pit at five one seven route six is, uh, engineer Chris Bell on the call tonight.
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Can you give us an update of, uh, where we were, where we are and where we want to go?
Yes, sir. Um, my name is Chris Bell. I'm a professional engineer from Pagan. I'm representing the applicant. Uh, I sent in a report to, uh, zoning, uh, CEO, um, Jim Halcy this afternoon. Uh, he said he'd sent that on to the individual members. Uh, I don't know if you've got that report. Um, along with that was a revised, uh, restoration plan showing what we had done and also some pictures. I can, um, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I can share the screen and, uh, open up that letter and just briefly go through it.
Uh, I, yes, I would appreciate that. And while I do know that it showed up in my inbox this afternoon, I did not get a chance to uh, review it before the meeting tonight. So if you can walk us through that, uh, I don't know if anybody else had a chance to, but, uh, please help.
See if I can, uh, do this. Share the screen. Can everybody see my letter?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, okay, uh, I've listed here several items, uh, that I'm reporting on. And I'll, I'll briefly just go through them. Um, we completed the restoration on Friday afternoon with all the seeding done, all the grading and seeding done, uh, for the disturbed area. And, um, we had a inspection this morning by the town engineer. Uh, and he gave a report to, um, Jim Halcy this afternoon. And what I am going to do is just briefly go through what we've done since the last meeting. Uh, number one, the stumps at the southeast corner of the gravel pit have been completely removed from the wetland buffer. And there is a very small pile that, uh, we could not get off the site. And we're storing those on the west side near station two plus oh, near the parking lot. Uh, I don't have a date when we're going to get those out, but it's, it's basically about a half a truckload. Mostly just, uh, not stumps, but more tree trunks. And some logs. Uh, the final grading, number two, final grading between station two plus fifty uh, on the west side and station three plus seventy-five on the east side, going all the way back to station five sixty-five, the end of the project has been completed. We had inspection, uh, a week before last, uh, for the grading, uh, with the town engineer, Jim Halcy, uh, Joe Wagner from Wetlands and also from, uh, Hank Gruner. Uh, we've, they approved the, uh, the grading. And once that was approved, we topsoil seeded and mulched, uh, the entire area, uh, except for the existing topsoil pile that's there, uh, because that's going to be used to topsoil the rest of the project. Uh, and also we did not, uh, topsoil the, uh, degraded sand pile, which is about six hundred cubic yards, uh, near station two fifty east. We could not get that off the site before the cease and desist, so that still remains. Um, we did also install the, let me see, number three, uh, we had a couple of meetings with Hank Gruner out on the site. He looked at the turtle nesting area that we have back of station five that goes from five to station five sixty-five. It's about twenty-five feet wide. Uh, he wanted to be all sand, uh, so that the turtle nesting would be easy for the turtles and have a slight slope to it. And, uh, he, he approved that last week as far as the grading goes. And we also discussed the seeding for that area, which, uh, he has decided that the best thing to use is, uh, the little blue stem Connecticut echo type. It's like a, a blue flower type, uh, grass. And he wants a fifty percent coverage in that area. He's going to actually point that out when we do get to seed and cover it. But, uh, at this point, we covered the area with a seedless fiber mix to prevent any erosion between now and when we seed it. Uh, we can seed it at any time, uh, from a couple of weeks to now, uh, to a time when we, uh, uh, if, if the commission does approve our extension, we can, the next time we, uh, we, uh, restore a phase, we can seed it at that time. And also we can seed it in the fall again, uh, in case areas are not covered. Uh, the number four, the conveyance swale was installed between station four and the detention pond with a silk fence at the end, uh, near the pond inlet to, uh, prevent any sediment from going into the pond. We're going to be watching the swale, uh, during rain events to see if we need any additional silk fence barriers along the way. I don't expect to see a lot of water in the swale. Well, there should be some, but, uh, I think the swale is very, very much oversized to handle the flow without a problem. Uh, number five, if the commission grants the applicant the extension, I would, uh, we anticipate that the first thing to be removed is the graded sand pile, approximately six hundred yards. And, uh, the operation of, of removal can proceed from station two fifty to about station one ninety. This would, uh, uh, complete a phase. And at that point, we should, uh, restore the whole area from station two ten all the way back, uh, including the area where the, the sand, uh, the graded sand pile will be removed. There, there's a difference in twenty feet here from one ninety to two ten. So, uh, it's about twenty feet. So we can, um, start the next operation without disturbing the topsoil and see that, you know, we had just put down, I have a small, uh, area that we can get in and out with the trucks and operate. I think this is actually going to go pretty fast, but I'm going to be conservative and say this should be completed in about two months. Once the restoration for this area, the second, this, this first area, uh, after the extension is granted, once this first rest, restoration is completed, we'll have an inspection. And, uh, and with the, the town approval and town engineer approval, we can proceed to the final uh, phase, which is, it'll be about something less than two phases going from one ninety all the way to the front of the project, uh, which will include all the grading to the east and the west. I attached a, a site plan, which I can show, showing the restored areas. Uh, let me move to that. I'm going to take this letter off.
Okay, no, sounds good.
Uh, can everyone see my plan?
Yes.
Okay. Um, what I've done is taken out, uh, some of the notes, uh, for the cease and desist. And I, uh, added in this, uh, the areas that we restored. The sloped area I show here is a little bit larger than, uh, what was proposed. Uh, it being larger, that the slope is not as steep. We, uh, left a lot of material over here for the slope and we added material down in here to bring it up past the two ninety-four elevation, which is the flood zone elevation. We fill in some pockets that were sitting around here. So we left about two thousand yards, uh, that we didn't take out. We added in here, um, because we couldn't remove it. We figured it might as well just add it in, uh, for the grading, to make the grading a little bit higher, which is, higher is okay. Uh, a- as I've stated probably in previous meetings, it's not the goal of the owner to remove as much material out here as possible. His goal is to get a nice looking site, um, so he can develop it or, or sell it. So this area that I show, uh, with the grass hatch is the entire area that's been, um, grassed. The small area over here is the turtle nesting area. It's about seventy feet long by about, uh, twenty-five to thirty feet wide. Uh, that's the area that, uh, Hank Gruner has approved, uh, for the slope that's there now. And it's also been, um, covered with a, uh, a fiber to prevent erosion for now. Uh, it's, it's put in seedless because we don't want to add any extraneous seeds or weeds or anything else, except for the exact mix that we want, uh, for the turtles. With that, this is the pile that was, uh, left of graded sand. It's still is there. And this white area, uh, has not been restored because it's, it's going to be run over by the trucks when we start the next phase. As soon as we get past this, this point here with this removal, uh, we can restore this entire area uh, before we do the finish, uh, removal of here. Uh, shown here, uh, to the, um, east of the, uh, gas station property and to the west of the, um, detention pond. Uh, the amount of cubic yards I had, I had more chance to estimate what has been removed from the site and what remains. Uh, it seems to be about two, two thirds of the, less than two thirds of the available material has been removed. Um, the original estimate of thirty-two thousand yards of removal, uh, was a conservative estimate. We, uh, that thirty-two thousand, we left two thousand on site, uh, for this grading. And that thirty-two thousand actually included about eighteen hundred yards, two thousand yards of topsoil, which was never intended to leave the site. So what's actually left is about, uh, it's about eight thousand yards in this total hatched area. That's here. It's about eight thousand. Minus, uh, this, this area had about five hundred cubic yards that was removed from the site. And that is included in that two thirds, I told you. And that is included in that two thirds I told you about. So at this point, you know, about sixteen thousand, sixteen, eighteen thousand has been removed. And there's about eight thousand left. At this point. That's about all I have to say. We 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 believe that we've covered all the areas that have been disturbed. I did get a report from Jim Allison late today. Pretty late today that I guess when you're up in a higher elevation and you're looking down at this project. There is a little vault spot at the top of this ridge, which I did not see and apparently none of the inspection has seen because we didn't climb to the top of the ridge. We're basically shooting the grass from all this area here. And no one ever climbed to the top of the ridge. But if there is a bald spot up there, which I believe, I believe we will, we'll make sure we get that thing covered as soon as possible. I don't think it's that big. You can't see it, I guess, from a higher elevation on one of the higher roads. That's about all I have to present at this point. I think we've we've taken care of all the concerns. We have the release from the cease and desist from wetlands we received today in an email. And I I believe we can entertain any questions the commission has regarding the the application.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Do any of the commission members have any questions on the application for extension of the permit?
Show you some of the pictures that we have at the same time here. This is a Have you seen the picture? This is a picture looking at the slope.
No, we're not. I don't see the pictures. I still got the site plan showing.
Oops, I'm sorry. I guess you've got to push that every time. Can we see the picture?
Yes.
Okay, good. This was taken Friday after we finished blowing the seed on the sloped area. The slope area is we have a heavy concentration of the seed mix because you know, to get a very good coverage because of the possibility of erosion. The flatter areas have a lighter coverage, but that's one of the
So that is not the hill with the bald spot?
That is the hill with ball spot, yes.
Okay, I was gonna say, it looks like you could see just a hint of it right at the top of that picture.
That's what it does look like that, Jed.
Let's see. Sorry, I have to get that back up again. Oh, right up on top here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're not seeing the picture right this minute.
Oh. I'm gonna hit the share again.
But what I heard from Jim was if you if you look at that hill from the lake roadside, you'll be able to see it much better. I had not been out there to look at that since I talked to him.
Yeah, I I did not personally see this picture Friday afternoon. I wasn't able to get out there. I now that they say it's ball up there, I can see that. Well, I I would hope that's pretty small. We can take care of that.
Chris, do you know what the elevation is where you finished spreading that two thousand yards of material?
I I wasn't there when it was finally graded. I know it was. I mean, I I walked on it when it was lower and it's definitely about three feet higher than it was. It was around elevation ninety-three or so. And I I know it's over ninety-five now. I did not take the elevation, but by sight it was definitely three feet higher because I took some elevations around it. That was the proper elevation and it's all level now. So it it's it's got to be a good ninety-five plus.
That's that's two ninety-five then, right?
I'm I'm sorry, two ninety-five, yes, sir. And the access road at the time of our first grading inspection had a little bit too much material on it. And basically, they took some of that back down to the original grade. As it's supposed to be around about two ninety-one or so. Plus or minus. The excess road. If you recall, when it was not untouched, it went up and down in elevation about six to ten inches. As you went through the site, basically what they did is they took the high spots off and they filled in the low spots. So it ends up being around two ninety to two ninety-one through most of the most of the site, pretty flat.
And the flood level is two ninety-four, right?
The flood level at station four, station three to four is two ninety-four. That's correct.
So those are all going to be raised above flood level?
Yes, and the building, any building that go would automatically go a foot above flood elevation anyway, but you know, we're already above the flood elevation now. And we would continue that elevation throughout the rest of the phases, whatever that is. So it's at two ninety-five, two ninety-five and a half. We'll continue that all the way to station of zero plus fifty.
Right. And the turtle nesting area, how is that going to be protected in the future? So so nobody unzit boser or one of those loaders through there? Is it is it marked out now? Is it state? Is there going to be some protection rocks maybe put around this area?
That's that's a good idea. We didn't think about protecting it. I mean, there's no intention to you know, have the accessway gravel or anything else. But we could certainly block that area off. We could do that, sure.
I would think that, you know, if Hank decided that that's where he wants to put a sterile nesting area, that probably rocks around the thing to keep it protected in perpetuity, that would be a good idea.
I I would, I would say that's a very good idea. And we did a lot of work to get to that point, wouldn't want to have anybody ruin it. And again, it's the area is going to be fifty percent grassy, wants fifty percent bare area. And fifty percent of this blue stem grass, so it it could easily be misinterpreted as, you know, something else if the barrier is, you know, start getting other types of grass in it. We want to make sure it's it's sectioned off. So, yeah, we could, we would definitely like to block that.
So so that could be added, Jed, to the
Yeah.
Yep, I agree. Anything else, Scott? Anybody else have any questions?
Hi, this is Leanne Hutchinson. Can you hear me?
Yes, Leanne.
Hi, I have two or three quick questions for Mr. Bell. In our last meeting last month, we, the subject of a cease and desist order from both the planning and zoning commission, the wetlands commission came up. And I think Mr. Bell, when he started to conclude his remarks, made a reference to both. So just for the record, were did both of those commissions issue a cease and desist and this remediation type work has been done under that? Or did one commission issue one and not the other, or what officially happened?
The the wetlands commission ordered a cease and desist. And as of today, they sent us an email saying that the cease and desist has been lifted because we met all the requirements that were in the cease and desist to be handled. And you know, Joe Wagner has been to every site meeting, just about every site, I mean, just about everyone. Except one where he could make, to make sure that we've been following his you know, guidelines and making sure we did everything that the commission wanted. Again, the cease and desist lifting letter that we received, I could pull that up if if you want to see that. I know that was sent out to the commission this morning.
Is that something that's part of the inland wetlands and water courses record so that if somebody was looking at this, they would see it?
I believe it would be now because he, that was posted before. It was sent to the zoning office before two thirty. And I would assume that Amanda posted it. I didn't check to see if it was posted, but it should be posted. My letters, my letter is the only thing that didn't, and my site plan did not get posted because I was late getting the letter from the town engineer.
Okay, and maybe for you or Jed, is the cease and desist that was issued by the planning zoning commission? Is there a record of that that we can include in the meeting minutes?
I don't, I don't think, we didn't get a cease and desist from planning and zoning, Mr. Chairman, did we? I didn't get one. I only got one from wetlands. I mean, we were under the order to get everything and all the ducks lined up and get it done. Otherwise, we weren't going to get the extension. But I don't think we got a cease and desist.
I was under the impression you did get one from planning and zoning, but I could be wrong and I don't recall seeing it. And, you know, we normally go through those things at the meeting under the the agent's report. And and I guess, so I can follow up on on the paperwork on there. But I do know from sitting through the last inland wetlands commission meeting and talking to Agent Hallazy today that it seems like the the restoration has been a very good news story and that everybody from the Agent Hallazy to Agent Wagner to Hank Brunner to our engineer were were satisfied with the actions that were taken. Nobody was satisfied in the actions that got us to that point. But as of today, all all the entities are satisfied with what we have done to remediate those past sins.
Okay, well, that's good. If we could just make a note and I'll try to remember to ask next month and make sure that that was referenced somehow. Since we know we're without our zoning agent tonight.
Yes, yeah, appreciate it. Thank you, Leanne, yeah.
And my last question for Chris Bell is, I had asked last month if there was somebody on site who was doing any supervising. I know with COVID and winter, there wasn't that much going on, as it might have been at another time. And you said there was somebody named Pat. I think you weren't sure of the person's last name. And in your letter to Jim Hallissey from today, it mentions a Bill Young. Is that somebody who's on site at the end of auto parts or is that somebody who's part of this project? Or is he just, I think you call him a contact person. Is that somebody new or just somebody who's aggressive with what's going on?
Yeah, what had happened the day after I gave you the name of Pat, the next day he was fired for some other reasons. And immediately that day, we got Bill Young on board. He is the supervisor of operations for the Manchester Gravel. Who is in charge of the people on site. He was not necessarily there every day since the last meeting, because the men weren't there every day. But he would be there in the morning to make sure they were directed to do correctly what had to be done. And I I basically have been also staying in touch with every operator that was there. Bill Young and also the two operators that were running the excavator and the bulldozer. I talked to on a daily basis. I also talked to the hydro seed man on a daily basis to make sure everything was going according to plan. Phil Young and I were both contacting people to make sure they were done. We would alternate visiting the sites. I was there a couple of times a week and he was there a lot more. But there, besides the people that are on site, the workers there in the auto parts place, they picked up anywhere where if there was no one else on site for communication, they made sure it got done. The owner's nephew runs the operation there, Mike, and he, you know, got things done immediately when we asked. So it's been more than one person, really. We kind of had to have more more than one person on site in order to make sure things got done in this timeframe. Because basically, we only had thirty days to get this thing wrapped up.
Okay, that's a pretty thorough answer. Thank you.
Any other questions?
In the future, Jed, what's the towns? Who's going to be overseeing that and how often are they going to be down there?
Well, the, so a question I had for Chris is, I know on the original plan that was approved, we had a requirement that a report be submitted to the town, I don't know, I don't recall exactly who in the town for completion of each phase before proceeding to the next phase.
Yeah, that was my responsibility after each phase. And as I said, when I got on site, I had no idea they were removing this much material. Otherwise, I I would have gotten involved a lot earlier and would have prevented a lot of problems. I was not told they had proceeded this far. But in hindsight, I'll be much more on top of this. And we'll have more than one person watching over these people to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do and they don't exceed the limits of what they're allowed to do.
But what kind of written reporting should we expect to get from you as we head over the next two months, say, to completion of the project?
Well, I'm, I'm going to be talking to the person on site and also the owner. Actually, I I talk to them three to four times a week on other projects. And it's not going to be difficult for me to stay on top of this. As I said, I I didn't do anything between January and April on it. I didn't know they were taking that much material out. But I'll be talking to him on, you know, biweekly basis, if not, you know, three or four times a week. And I'll I'll check in with the Bill Young, who is actually has his finger right on the operation, the daily operation of it. So we'll know where we are at any given point. And I'll, I'll send her, I think I should send a report at this point because I think it's going to go pretty fast. I think you should have a report the Thursday before each planning and zoning meeting to make sure you're kept abreast of what's going on.
Is it possible to get, just to send Jed reports weekly?
I would prefer those get sent to Agent Hallacy.
I mean, yeah, normally I would have to send them to Jim because we, Jim and I talk quite a bit. And that's the, I'm supposed to be sending them to Jim, then he sends them to you. But I mean, I could send you to both if they want.
I would be satisfied if you would would send those to the agent.
Okay. That's, then you distribute some to everybody.
Yes, yeah. Put it on the website.
Yeah, I can do that. I'll have it sent before the end of every week.
Okay.
Let me write that. I better write that down.
We'll we'll help you out with that because I think that'll be one of our conditions.
Very good.
The
And the stones, Jed, could be a condition also.
Correct, yep. So
That should be done right away before people get in there with those big machines and disturb that area.
Well, it's it's already silk fenced off, which I know isn't a great physical barrier. But, you know, there's no intention for anything to go back there except the hydro machine to seed the the nesting area when we get to seed. But yeah, we'll get the stones back there. And if we have a problem finding stones, I can send them to my property.
Only fifty percent of that's going to be hydro seeded?
That's what Mr. Brunner has requested. He wants the other half to be bare. That means spots. In other words, you just want spotty areas.
Now, when we say stones Now, when we say stones around this area, what kind, what kind of stones are we talking?
Well, I mean, I'm thinking like boulders, like, you know.
Okay, that was what I had in mind.
Something you can't drive over. Something, you know, maybe, you know, two feet in diameter, weigh a couple thousand pounds.
And when would you expect to be able to get those stones in place to protect it? I know that's not going to be like a tomorrow thing, but.
Um, that's a good question. First, we got to find them. Now, if my truck wasn't getting, my dump truck wasn't getting fixed today. I'd have them loaded on tomorrow to bring them up the next day, but we gotta, we gotta get it placed locally, I guess, to get something. And I would hope within. Well, we're going to want to have them done. Within like two weeks because that's when we want to hydro seed. That's when the seed's coming in. So. I'd say at the end of two weeks, I think would be reasonable. We don't need that many stones. I think a half a dozen would do. For that area, it's only thirty feet wide.
Okay.
I need to make a, a comment to Commissioner Person, please. I did talk to the town engineer about our plans going forward and restoring everything. And I said, the commission has one of the conditions of approval to keep the silt. Sultation detention basin there. And he says he disagrees with that. He said he thinks it should be covered up and handled during development of the site. Because he said that's probably not the most ideal place to put a detention basin. And at this point, with some of the prospects for the property, people looking at it, I. I would think that parking lot is probably going to be better there than sultation basin or detention basin. But the town engineer did disagree with that. I don't have it in writing, sir, but. He said, when that comes up, we'd be happy to talk about that. I don't know if you're, if the commission's dead set on keeping it there or not. You know, it's the top of the discussion that we probably want to talk about before the end of the project.
Yeah, all I know is the approved plan had maintaining that detention basin. Once it was complete. I will. I will put that, you know, as another potential condition for approval is that at the next meeting, we would have a. A wrap up from Agent Hallazy on, you know, what, what you, he and the town engineer concluded was the right. Best answer for the detention basin. Consider that at that point.
We must have had it on the print to stay, to remain there for a reason.
Yep.
Yeah, we thought it was a good idea. That's what John Valenti suggested. And, you know, I, I wasn't against it at the time. But now I'm, I'm getting different opinions on it and, and some flack from the owner. So do we really need to keep it there? And since the whole area is going to be grassed and restored, there, there really isn't a need for it. So, you know, let's, let's have a discussion about it, I guess. I don't want to drop it out. But now it's, it's going to be maintained until the end.
Anything else, Chris?
No, that was, that's all I wanted to bring up.
Okay. In, in how long did you want the extension for?
Six months.
So. Because I was taking some notes there, I'll be bold and make the following motion. Is to approve the extension of the existing special permit. To operate a sand gravel pit five one seven route six for six months. With the following conditions. One, within two weeks, seed the bald spot at the top of the hill. Two, within two weeks. Place boulder stones to protect the turtle nest nesting area. Three, submit weekly reports to the planning and zoning agent. On the status of the project. And four, resolve with the zoning agent and the town engineer prior to next meeting. Whether or not the detention basin should be retained.
I would think that that would be part of our next meeting, wouldn't it, Jed? If, if they come to some conclusion, I think that they should probably tell us why that they're going to.
I would expect that if we could take action with respect to modifying the plan. At that point, I just want to get the, the condition for going forward at this point. That we're going to get with the agent and our engineer to resolve the best way. And that, and that's, I guess, more for, for us to do than. Chris Bell, if all other things being equal, you know, we would be obligated to follow the. The, the currently approved plan, but if, if our engineer thinks we should do something different. We should certainly be willing to listen to that and change if appropriate. That at the next meeting.
Yeah, and I, you know, think we can even say that, you know, we can leave the, the swale that's along the side. And, and let that go towards the existing level spreader. I mean, there, there's a lot of things we can do to. You know, mediate the situation, that still will enhance the site without having a need for the basin. But again, we'll, we'll discuss that.
Do I have a second to that motion?
A second.
That was you, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. Ann Creme. Say again.
Aye.
Thank you. Scott?
Aye.
Lian?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion passes five zero zero.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening, commissioners. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you for all the hard work getting that taken care of, Chris.
Boy, I thought it was like pulling teeth. I'm glad it's over. Thank you.
The next item is the application of Adam Delventhal, one twenty eight Wheeling Road.
Hi, yes, I'm present.
Okay, why don't you walk us through your proposal there, Adam?
Okay, um, pretty much it's a, it's a thirty by thirty eight garage, three car garage with a apartment above it. That I guess is obeying by the planning and zoning guidelines there. I forget exactly what section. But it's below the hundred, eight hundred square foot. It has the, the driveway access. It has the stairs and going up the entrance to go stairs. And I think that was all that was called for, kitchen, bathroom.
Adam, can you show, can you show us on your drawing? And if you can't call it up. I will give it a shot. I had a hard time finding the dimensions of the accessory apartment. I, I think it was smaller than the three car garage, but I.
Yes, I, I updated, I sent an email to Jim with the actual blueprints. I don't know. If, I don't think that got published online yet. That actually. Send the email for, pull it up that way.
Okay, and I did not see that in, in a.
Would, would it be like, if I could just tell you the dimensions, is that like sufficient?
Why don't you pull up the, pull up the print? Is it on the print?
I could, it's probably on the ones that's published on the town website. That there's, I, I'm pretty sure there's a drawing. You should be able to get the, the measurements.
Okay, Adam, I just went to look at the, at the website and I saw nothing new added there.
Okay, it's definitely in Jim's email. I, I wish I could kind of share it here. I don't think I could do it from my phone.
Okay, well, and so.
The dimensions upstairs are thirty by twenty six. That's the, that's the, that's technically the apartment room, which would be seven hundred and eighty square feet.
Okay. And on the drawing of the, the garage, it shows a little bump out. Is that the breezeway that connects to your house?
Yes, correct. That's the breezeway mudroom. Correct, yep.
Yep, okay. And where you show the driveway on, on that drawing, is that where your current driveway is?
Correct, yep. There would be no alterations needed. Jim was concerned about that as well. And I, I replied to him that the driveway is wide enough. You could, you could fit it four cars wide as, as it is now.
So you consider you've got the required three parking spots here on that driveway.
Correct, yep.
And I didn't see from your drawing, and is it possible that you can call up that. Drawing that we do have that is posted online, just so we can talk from your site plan?
I don't think I can share it off of my phone. Is, is there any way, it's on the, yeah. You, maybe you could share it. I could walk you through it.
Yep, let me, let me see if I can. And Mindy, have you allowed me to screen share?
You should be able to.
Okay. Now, one of the things I noticed, Adam, is we had the same thing many times on this. Is that a goof up on our end or a goof up on you sending that to us?
I think I read somewhere multiple copies, so I just submitted a copy of everything. And I, I guess that would be a goof up on my end that I submitted duplicates, so. So right, yeah, that would be the floor plan, that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're getting close. Here's, here's the drawing that I was.
Yo.
Okay. I could not tell from this drawing how the septic system hooked up to your accessory apartment.
When I had talked to the Eastern Health District, the applied for it was that it would connect into the existing septic. And they approved that.
Okay, so you're planning on running another pipe from. The accessory apartment over to your existing septic.
Correct.
Okay.
I guess, yeah, I didn't draw it, yep.
In. The letter, Jed, the acceptance letter from Eastern Island is in with this application?
It's somewhere in there, yep. I think it's down at the bottom. If you go all the way down at the bottom.
Plan you had there.
Okay. Yeah, now it was not clear to me when I read that letter that that's what they meant. But it could be. And I just, I didn't see any, you know, I was expected to see a pipe running from that over into the existing septic tank. It was clear to me that you weren't installing a, a separate one.
But, yeah, okay.
Now, the.
Code compliant. Area for a future has been identified on the property.
You know, where, where is that at, Adam? The, the future repair spot?
The, the reserve, the reserve system area.
It does, it says that you're going to add a, add a bedroom?
Yeah, for the apartment, for it would be a one bedroom and then, I guess it wouldn't be a tub. Be a stand up shower, a toilet and a vanity sink, obviously.
Did you have a question on that, Scott?
It says that. Addition. Of an apartment upstairs, but then it says code compliant area for a future septic repair, which is reserve system for three bedroom house. Has been identified on the property, but now it's a three bedroom house plus another bedroom, another bedroom, right?
No, two bedroom plus this one would be the third bedroom.
Your house is two bedrooms right now?
Yep, two bedroom. Listens to bedroom.
Okay, that's good then. Okay, and, and here was the one real sticky point that, that I had. And it was based on the size of the lot.
Size of the what?
Of your lot for. For supporting. What, what do our regulations say? About the size of a lot to have an accessory apartment?
About coverage?
Well, I'm not sure, and. It says that the lot needs to comply with section eleven point two. Which is this graph right here. And so the question I have, when this graph here, and I'm looking for my regulations so I can see. With that. Thing actually says. So it says that for the ARD, the lot area square foot. Is a minimum of sixty thousand square feet. Where the applicant's lot. Is on the order of fifty thousand square feet. And so. For our commission. Now, Jim, you know, I, I mentioned this to Jim today and he thinks there's some words that might. Get around that, but he wasn't able to look them up before this meeting. But I know when we put the accessory apartment regulations into our zoning regulations. Our concern was, our expectation was that we would have, you know, fairly good sized lots. And so I don't know if, and it would be a question for the commission to decide. Is whether or not he meets this. This would be an issue that would need to go to the zoning board of appeals. Where this is an issue that there's some wording someplace else that would say, because this was a previously. Authorized lot, and we've changed the regulations to these accessory apartment regulations that came in after we made that change. authorized lot, and we've changed the regulations, do these accessory apartment regulations that came in after we made that change affected or not? And, and I haven't been able to tackle that issue today, but that's the, that was the one that I couldn't work my way through.
How do you get fifty thousand square? Because on that site map, I'm pretty sure that showed the minimum in my, the property is outside that minimum requirement box.
I got that fifty thousand square feet off the town appraisal card for your lot. And I also think that when, when, uh, your application says your lot is a little over one acre, I take, I use my, uh, rounding math, I, I go by about forty thousand square feet to the acre.
Okay.
And so you have to be, uh, I think it's a little over an acre and a half to get you up to the sixty thousand square feet. So, so that was my, my concern, you know, I like the, I like the thought of the accessory apartment and that. I'm just not sure that right this minute that complies with what our regulations require.
Jed, I think four dot eleven mentions the size requirement.
It, it, it does, and Kevin, doesn't that just reference us, uh, over to that chart?
No, it gives a size. Let me go back to it here.
I know it does for the Lake District. It says in the Lake District, the lot has to be a hundred and twenty thousand square feet.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was reading.
Yep. So, you know, the first thing under four point eleven point two, the site plan review and standards, the requirements of section eleven point two space requirements are satisfied. And I couldn't convince myself that that were true.
It seems like if the house was there, you ought to be able to do small adjustment, like building a accessory apartment.
Well, this isn't a small adjustment, and this, this is really like, you know, when the, the discussion we had on accessory apartments, it's not building a shed, it's building a house. And he, uh, you know, I would say that he is more than doubling the size of the footprint on his lot by adding.
Yeah, that's true.
And again, so what I would like to do, Adam, is defer the, the further discussion on this to our next meeting where I can, you know, talk to the zoning agent, because we didn't get a chance to, uh, talk about what our regulations require today and, and see if there's, uh, if there's something that he was aware of, that I'm not, that, that would allow us to get through this, or if the right way would be to go to the zoning board of appeals and, and request, uh, a variance to our regulation. So does that make sense, Adam? Does that make any significant hardship work as we go forward?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so, uh, with that, uh, does anybody have any other questions about the, uh, the accessory apartment here? And I think we all like accessory apartments. We just gotta make sure we, we follow our, our regulations as set out. Okay, well, I, I appreciate the discussion tonight, Adam. That'll help us, uh, come through this in a, the timely fashion when we get together at our next meeting in July.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your time, everyone.
Yep, thank you, Adam. Okay, so the the next item on the old business is previously approved special permit for a kennel operation at two forty-one Route Six. Is Scott B B online?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you, Scott, and, uh, so how about, uh, you're just walking the commission through what it is you've got and what it is you've, you would like to do. I have, at this point, not seen a, a copy of the special permit that was previously approved, so I don't know what, what that's asking for, um, in.
So I'll walk you through a little bit. So I've been training dogs at the post farm for the last twenty-three years. Um, to train dogs in your neighbor's field, you don't need any permits. So I was doing that for a long time. In two thousand and eleven, I came to the town to build a commercial kennel. Um, after a long battle with the town, I actually won. But that being said, all the money to build the building was gone, so I continued to train dogs in the field at the post farm. Um, and then this year I, um, bought out my partner, actually last year, it'd be a year ago. And the state requires me now, because I lease land at the post farm, to have approval from planning and zoning to do what I'm doing at the post farm, train dogs and have my daycare dogs there.
Now, is, uh, is this post farm, is that in our business commercial?
Uh, yeah, so, so I was already approved, all that's already been approved on the post farm for me to train the dogs and do everything that I'm doing there. The only thing I didn't do was build the building.
And are you looking to build a building now, or you just want to continue doing what you're doing?
Right now, I just want to continue to do what I'm doing and pay my kids' college loans. And, you know, I have talked to Serenity about building a smaller kennel on this side of the property in the future, but right now I just need to continue running my business. And so I've been paying taxes to the town of Andover on all my dog training equipment that's there since two thousand and eleven, too. Um, I'm also the dog warden in town or animal control officer in town, and that whole part of for the town is run out of there, to be honest with you. My business runs, runs the animal control.
And do you have a copy of the previously approved special permit?
I don't, but, um, there is one at the town hall, because they pulled up a bunch of stuff when I was there. The problem is, it was never signed by Bob Burbank. So that's where we are today.
Okay, so.
It's all there, it's in the meeting minutes.
And I saw that, I saw the meeting minutes and, uh, it just, you know, the meeting minutes said the special permit was approved.
Yeah.
And, and so I said, well, Jim, show me a copy of this special permit.
Yeah, it was never signed by Bob.
Okay, well, and I didn't know that was the rub. All I know is I have not yet seen the, the previous special permit. And so at this point, I guess, uh, you know, I would defer this, uh, until the next meeting as well, where we can see what your your special permit is. Uh, as I look through the kennel regulations, I'm not sure that the kennel regulations even apply to what it is that you're looking to do.
So they do apply because of the state. So the state has nowhere to put daycare, so that goes under boarding of dogs now. So any time you house a dog over five hours, then you need a kennel license.
And, and how many dogs are you boarding, so to speak?
So it depends on the day. I mean, I have a town permit for twelve of my own dogs there, and then I have up to twelve, fifteen other dogs at any given time.
Okay.
So it's on two hundred acres. There, I mean, all, all the town regulations, I can tell you this because of the long battle in the past.
I, I'm sure that you can, and if you've been doing this for twenty-three years, I'm thinking that one more month where we get, uh, you know, the documentation correct to support what you're trying to do probably is not the end of the world either, and, uh, we can, uh, have that in the record, something that we can review what was approved, uh, but, uh, yeah, when I first heard what you were asking for, you know, I, I cut those interesting articles out of the River East that apply to planning and zoning, and one was about the doggy daycare in Colchester. And that was in a residential area, and that caused a big taboo and, uh, but you don't seem to have that issue here, and so.
No, we've, I mean, we've been there a long time with no complaints.
Yep, okay.
And I mean, Jim's been there. Um, one of my nearest neighbors is on the board, so, I mean, he obviously if there's complaints, he would hear them. But yeah, whatever you want me to do.
Okay. Jim will let you know, and, uh, we'll deal with this at the next meeting, and, uh, now that, uh, now that the commission has an understanding of what it is that, you know, it was all, we knew something was coming, we had no idea what it was. It enlightened us tonight, that's very helpful. And, uh, now we'll, we'll get together and, and work on, uh, how do we conclude this satisfactorily to, uh, meet everybody's needs here. I think, I don't think it'll be too hard, but now that I understand it, uh, we'll, we'll go from there. Does that make sense, Scott?
Yep, yep.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Next item is, uh, your return to live commission meetings, and, uh, I, I see town hall is open now. Uh, I've wrestled with myself as to what, uh, you know, I kind of like showing up at the last minute and, uh, getting on Zoom and, uh, uh, doing that, uh, but I also kind of like getting together and, uh, and meeting with everybody, so, uh, I, uh, my thought is we should get together for an in-person meeting in July, see how it goes, and, and if we don't like it, we can go back to Zoom, but if we do like it, we can continue. But at this point, it's been so long since we've had an in-person meeting, we don't have that, uh, basis for comparison anymore. And so I, I was just wondering, uh, what everybody thought about that? If anybody had any concerns about that, I guess.
Hi, this is Leanne. I have a question and a comment.
Yep, go ahead, Leanne.
Leanne Hutchinson, um, I'm fully vaccinated, and we're all under a giant honor system about who is and who isn't, and, um, who's wearing a mask and who isn't. So I don't have any underlying conditions. I would be willing to meet in person. Um, I would like, I think, to see maybe some distancing. I don't know if six feet or not, um, but those are my thoughts, but I would defer to anybody who doesn't want to go back to in-person meetings. And, um, my other thought is, if we were to go to in-person meetings, would there be some sort of a feed or what have you, where if a commission member or a member of the public, um, could participate, if the rest of us are meeting in person?
Okay, so, uh, the first, uh, the first comment is on, uh, on a little bit of distancing, and, uh, I think we would do a little bit more than what we did in the past as far as distancing. I don't know that we, uh, part of it would be limited by, I don't know how many tables are over there in the community room. Uh, but if we had five tables, we could set those up so that, uh, everybody had, uh, a table, and I think that would be okay, and that would be in excess of the current requirements over for town hall right now, which are no social distancing requirements, only if you are not vaccinated, wear a mask.
I was in the town office building today. I wore a mask. Um, not everybody was. People were kind of interacting. Um, there was some plexiglass up, but some people were walking out from behind it. So again, um, I'll leave it up to other people. I'd be comfortable either way.
Okay, and, and I'm not going to ask everybody on the commission, uh, if they've been vaccinated. I don't know if that's a allowed question or not. I will only ask if there's anybody who is uncomfortable getting together, given those constraints where if, if you're vaccinated, you're not expected to wear a mask. If you're not vaccinated, you would be expected to wear a mask. I see more people wearing masks now than, than were wearing masks when they had to, just because they didn't like being told that they had to wear a mask. But, and, and then the second one is, I don't think we're technically ready yet to, uh, go with the providing a feed for other people. I would expect, you know, we, we don't often get a lot of extra people to show up at our meetings, and so my expectation right now would be to, uh, to have, uh, everybody show up in person and not provide the extra fee. But we might get smarter than that over at town hall. I don't know. Uh, I didn't tune into a Board of Education meeting, and they had, uh, a, a very good setup where they, uh, the, um, members of the public that, uh, they were expected to come in on Zoom, and, uh, it, it worked out very well. So, uh, we might get there, but I'm not sure that we're set up for that at the town hall quite yet. In fact, I'm a little concerned about, uh, you know, the, the setup with the big screen and all that, uh, we might be taping up, uh, drawings and that sort of thing. One of the things I like about Zoom is the ability to share screen, and everybody gets to see up close what we're looking at. I'm not sure we can duplicate that over in town hall, and that would be one of the things that might cause us to go back and say, no, we like Zoom meetings. I don't know. But I'd like to try it and see, uh, see how it goes.
I have a thought, and that is, that, um, community room is really quite large, and even if we were at one end of the room, even somewhat distant, somebody who wants, doesn't feel comfortable being that close could be at the other side of the room and speak, and you'd be still very far away.
Yes, that is true.
I'm so personally so comfortable with this. I'm vaccinated. I'll be right next to somebody else. I don't even feel like a need for distancing, but if other people do, okay.
Nope, I, uh, I, uh, agree with you, and, uh, but there are people with compromised immune systems and that, and, uh, we want, uh, we want them to feel comfortable as well. Um, but I do think that, that we can, if there's a person with a concern and wants to sit a little bit more distance, that is a big room. Uh, the other downside to that room is the acoustics aren't all that great, and.
Microphone.
Yep, so this seems to work out pretty good there. Okay, any, anyhow, uh, anybody, uh, anybody else have any thoughts, concerns, or, or whatever on meeting in public, in person? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion that, uh, next meeting be, uh, in person in the town hall?
I'll make a motion that the next meeting in July be in person at the town hall.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Scott, will you second that? Okay, Scott Preson, uh, seconded the motion. Any other discussion on that? Uh, hearing none, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, the motion carries five zero zero. Next up is, uh, is the parking and picnic area. Did, uh, Eric rejoin us?
Looks like he's there.
Okay, well, I'm gonna move on to, well, let me just talk about the, the parking in the picnic area and, uh, in, I know Eric had a couple of, uh, there were a couple of ideas. One was to, uh, do something. do something to improve the parking along Lake Road at the new property we owned out there from Merritt Valley to to Route Six where everybody parks. And then we had talked, at the time, we we went off to purchase that property about putting a little picnic table in out there. And I thought those were both good ideas. I I asked Eric if he would at least investigate the, you know, Diane Griner's got this grant money that can be used for a lot of different things, and and he was going to go look at that. And then I know the the town has some money coming from the federal government for COVID stuff. And we're not exactly sure how to spend that, but that might be a idea. But if neither of those options occurred, I wouldn't be opposed to having the commission consider. And if somebody was willing to make a motion, vote on on that at that point in time. And so, and he was looking, I forget the exact number, but I think they were looking for less than a thousand dollars. And while I don't think we're building up our open space fund very robustly yet, a thousand dollars, and and that might have been for something, he had some idea over there at at the ball fields to do something different over there, and I can't remember what it was, maybe some exercise equipment or something, can't can't recall. But but they were all good ideas, all things that would be good for the town. And but there's, if there's no Eric here, I don't know where we are, and so nothing further on that item for tonight. Moving on to the Affordable Housing Plan. And so, you know, I think at the last meeting, I told everybody the next day I was going to go attend a webinar on affordable housing. I did that, and and we were going to go, you know, use some of our money that's set aside for the plan of conservation and development to to come up with an affordable housing plan. But last week, maybe it was the week before, I guess it was the week before, the state put out new they had more grant money, they had another five hundred thousand dollars that they were going to give out to towns up to fifteen thousand dollars per town to develop affordable housing plans. So Eric and I submitted a grant request for that. And we're just waiting to to hear back, but since our request was to do exactly what the state wants us to do, and we got it in fairly quickly after the notification came out on it, I would expect that that would be approved, and and we go forward on that. But nothing new, nothing new on that until we find out that our grant is approved. And I have nothing new on the sign regulations.
And the cost from Bill Warner was less than
The cost from Bill Warner was, I think, sixty-nine hundred dollars. We put in the grant for ninety-six hundred dollars, which was still only two-thirds of what the maximum was. And I think, you know, I would hope that if we got Bill Warner or some other planner, maybe they could help us update our regulations. We got a bunch of taskers from the state on changes to our regulations. And none of those are urgent. I think there's nothing more urgent than the the state Affordable Housing Plan, which is June of 2022. But by sometime in 2023, there's a bunch of changes that slightly modify a bunch of stuff with respect to the wording in there. And it's almost like making the affordable or the accessory apartments a right instead of a request. And so, you know, I'll work my way through all those things, but I'm not prepared to talk about the content of that. Only that we got a bunch of tasking from the state on on changes that we have to make to our planning and zoning regs. So anyhow, we're, we put in a grant request, and I expect that grant request to be approved. And then we'll go back to see if we can get Bill Warren to help us out on a plan. New business was the previously approved kennel operation, we already talked about that. Oh, next one, election of officers. I thought that the election of officers would take place after the start of the fiscal year when when we had our new members in, and any retiring members no longer here. But I reviewed our bylaws, and they say that it will be done the first meeting after the election, which was our last meeting. And it said if it's not done at the first meeting after the election, it will be done at the second meeting after the election. So here we are, and I will open the floor for nominations for Planning and Zoning Commission Chairman.
I nominate you.
My second.
Thank you, Susan, who is the, who is the second, is that Leanne?
Anne.
Yeah, okay, very good. Any other nominations? And I know there are folks out there who could do a better job than I could.
I don't think so, Jed.
Okay, so so hearing none, we have any any further discussion on? Let's see, yeah, we had a motion and seconded. So with that in mind, all in favor?
Yes, I'll just quickly, Jed, this is Leanne, you mentioned further discussion. So I've been on the commission for quite a while, and it, I have never wanted to be the chairman. It's a big job, and I think you do an excellent job, and I'm glad that you're willing to continue.
Thank you, Leanne, I try. Not always successful, but we keep on trying.
But it is a big job, it's
It certainly, not one that I felt ready to take on when I did, but but there you go. And I'll I'll continue to make a go on it if I, by some chance, happen to be elected.
You do, you do a better and better job. Constantly getting better.
Yep, well, I like to think that I can learn a little bit still, and but but I do know there's, there are some great candidates sitting in the wings. And one of these days, they'll be ready to step up. I don't think there, it would be fair to expect that of them right this minute. And so that's that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will abstain, I didn't think it was right to vote for myself. So the motion passes four zero one. I'll now take nominations for Vice Chair. And I would nominate Anne Creme.
I would second.
Thank you, Susan. Any other nominations? Any discussion? Maybe next year, Anne, I would have to to let you take a crack, but that would be running one of these meetings, but it takes a while to get up to speed. I do remember your first one, it's like where you had to chair, I think, a public hearing, and I said, I never wanted to do that to you.
I did it for about three months at that point, I think.
Yep, that I said that, that wasn't right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining?
I guess I abstain.
The motion carries four zero one with Vice Chairman Creme abstaining. Thank you very much, Anne, and thank you for that. Next up is the approval of our minutes. And we'll start out, I'll make a motion to approve the April nineteenth public hearing meeting minutes.
My second.
Thank you, Susan. Any discussion? And I do have a, I have a couple of things, I know under Members Absent, it says Kevin was not there. Any what's? And I will, I will read for the record, Mindy, but if you need me to go back and send you an email of my changes to the verbiage, let me know. But on page two, the last sentence of the first paragraph, it says fifty-seven Hendy Road currently an acre, and it's proposed to be four acres. The other lot will become one acre, and it should actually be an acre and a half. Because it takes an acre and a half to get the sixty thousand square feet minimum size of a lot today. In the fourth paragraph down, the second line there, it says, and currently, the building line is five hundred feet from the center of Hendy Road. That should be fifty feet. And then in the next to the last line on that same paragraph, it says, this is where Jay Larson is struggling. It is easy to get the perpendicular lines and to get the width measured from the building line. It it should say, if we look at the existing lot, it is easy to get the perpendicular line and get the width measured from the building line. It is not easy, yeah, not easy to get the perpendicular lines and to get the width measured from the building line, fifty feet from the center line of Hendy Road. So let me, let me do that again, Mindy, so maybe you have a fighting chance now that I figured out what my notes say here. The last sentence should be, if we look at the existing lot, it is not easy to get the perpendicular lines and to get the width measured from the building line, which is taken from the fifty-foot center line of Hendy Road. Okay, and in the next paragraph, the last sentence says, he also explained another option would be to, with another option that would comply, although it is not favorable. Cross out the word favorable and say he is not fond of, but met the regulations, is to use the existing lot lines width to the west. And then under that section, the third paragraph up from the bottom, the last sentence says flood elevation is three to three point five feet. So the house will be raised up to, it says three to five feet, it should be three to five point five feet. Any other comments on the public hearing? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries five zero zero. Now we'll move on to the regular meeting on April nineteenth. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the regular meeting on April nineteenth?
Does so move.
Thank you, Susan. Looking for a second? Thank you, Anne. Any discussion? And once again, Kevin was present. As I recall, he asked some very good questions here. And I had no, I had no comments on the the regular meeting minutes, anybody else have any? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, aye.
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 All opposed? All abstaining? Motion carries five zero zero. We will move on to the public hearing and regular meeting minutes on May seventeenth. First, we'll do, looking for a motion to approve the public hearing min, meeting minutes.
I moved to accept the public hearing meeting minutes.
Thank you, Anne, second.
My second.
Thank you, Scott, any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining?
I abstained because I was not present.
Okay. The motion passes four one zero with Commissioner England abstaining. Moving on to the regular meeting minutes, looking for a motion to approve.
This is Leanne, I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Leanne. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Anne. Any discussion on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
The motion carries four zero one, Commissioner England abstaining. And last but not least, is the Planning and Zoning Special Meeting Sightwalk on Saturday, June fifth.
I move approval in minutes.
Thank you, Susan, second.
My second.
Thank you, Scott, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Any abstaining?
Leanne Hutchinson, I was not there.
Okay, the motion passes four zero one with Commissioner Hutchinson abstaining. Moving on to item eight, correspondence. We have none of that for tonight. Administrative reports have none of that for tonight. Commission discussion miscellaneous. Anybody have anything they want to bring up?
I, I would like to talk about a couple of things, Jed.
Okay, go ahead.
I know that the road, the road frontage thing, I know we can't work on that right now because there's some pending applications. I want to put those things and also the building in the flood plain. I want to change those things like we talked about in the, so that there's no residential building in the flood plains, and I know that the perpendicular thing is in there. I want to change the frontage on the town road also to, so it's more clear. Okay, I just want to put that, I just want to get it into the work so we don't forget that.
Okay, yep, I won't forget it. I'm just trying to get through, well, if I have to change the regs for some other legal things, I'd like to do all at once, and I, I want to make sure that we get the housing plan going, but I, I agree that those are two things that need to be done. I'm not as concerned about the, the frontage, but I, I do think that was probably an oversight that we didn't have frontage in there, and I just was satisfied with the outcome of the discussion on width. And I don't know if there's any unintended consequences of changing the frontage. I don't think there are, but you never can tell, but, but that's in there. Yeah, you, you got me on the hook for that, so it might just not be quick. Any other comments? Kevin, are you still with us here tonight?
Yeah, I'm still with us.
Yep, what time did you get here, just so we can get it in the, the minutes and not have you show up as absent?
I, I think the official time was 7:02 when I checked, but you
You must have just finished. Yeah, I knew you showed up very shortly, right after we got going there, and I didn't just wanted to make sure. Okay, very good, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Thank you, Scott. Any second?
Second.
Thank you, Ann. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, thank you very much, everybody, and thank you, Ann, for your willingness to stay on there as Vice Chair, and we'll, we'll keep giving it a go. Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
See you all next month.
Good night.
Good night.